My guess is he's sending time between canceling.
You didn't go in today, right?
And when I curse, she tells me something.
Yeah, we had professionals that said they canceled it yesterday. Yeah, thank goodness.
They should send you.
Right.
Sending that one.
So let's do the pledge while we're ready to have.
I've seen this whole hilarious.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's March thirteenth and we're here for a building committee meeting. It was pre-announced. We'll just get going here shortly.
All right, I'll be looking at getting this loaded. Do not bring down crash drive. If I can start this to GMP. Well, if we send this to you, we guys are eventually. Brought up in email. Working on that simultaneously. So I thought I'd start with just reviewing what the construction manager does. I sent you all the guide to construction management last week. The construction manager's job is to assist the district, as you know, through our process with Ekman, the planning and construction staff, including cost estimating, schedule, recommendations on materials. Once we finish that phase and the design phase is complete, they're responsible for administration of construction, management of services and supervision, furnishing workers and materials, performing the work to complete the project, and most relevant for our meeting tonight, bidding out the working materials. They're required to complete construction out of below the GMP, and during the construction phase, they have to submit applications for payment with all the supporting documents required by the contract. GMP, guaranteed maximum price. Typically, it's not finalized until after the project design is finalized. Until that time, we work with an estimate of project cost, which is what we've been doing for the last year and a half, or year and three months. The estimate that we developed in December two thousand sixteen. The GMP, which we're looking at tonight, proposed by the CM, has to be accepted in writing. Once accepted, it becomes an amendment to the CM contract. The GMP includes a contingency amount of bids that exceed cost estimates and any unexpected conditions that may arise during construction. Any unspent contingency is returned to the owner. In other words, the construction manager can't spend more than the GMP without the express written approval of the owner via change order. Our GMP overall is within budget. It's down twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars from our October thirty-first estimate. Bids, Greg and I reviewed with Ekman and Ingrid from Danwell. Overall, there was really good coverage, no big surprises in the bids. There are literally hundreds of documents. We reviewed primarily the summary sheet. Overall, they've gone with the lower bidder. There are a couple of situations where they did not. Literally, that two percent is because those people bid both projects, and they have to take about losing. They were taking the best value for the largest project essentially, and then going to maybe the second place bidder for the other project where they felt that the scope of the project or the overlap was going to be too much for the bidder to handle.
Would you repeat that, please?
Sure. Overall, they chose the low bidder, and there was about two percent of situations where there were folks who bid both projects, and because of the construction schedule, they don't think people are going to be able to do both projects, so they're going to, they went with the low bidder for the larger project.
Gotcha.
And the second runner-up essentially for the smaller project.
Meredith, I was just curious, was that the case in the site work? Do you know?
I don't believe so, but I don't, I would have to look at my notes specifically to be able to answer that for you.
Meaning, there was just one site work contractor for both, or vice versa?
No, there was not one site work contractor for both, but I'm not sure a site contractor bid both.
Okay.
They still have one point three million dollars left in contingency. Major changes since October thirty-first. At the elementary school. By the time I get this to load, it'll be done. Major changes since October thirty-first. The elementary school, we're up two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in site costs, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand between general conditions and temporary working conditions. Both of those are due to need, due to our need to carry the work essentially into the second summer in order to stay within the five acre alteration of terrain permit limits for DES and TOU, to be able to keep the facility operational for summer programming. They couldn't do the main office, which was originally slated to be done this summer, plus all of the parking and the bus loop, and meet those two requirements. We can't use the junior senior high at all this summer, and we had to have a place to run summer programming, so in order to do that, they had to hold off on the office renovations, and because of the DES AOT permit, we can't do all of the area at one time, unless we want to pay to have someone onsite monitoring our project for that purpose.
So Meredith, can I ask what will be done over the summer, then? That site preparation, junior high, senior high, across the street, and then things, but not the main office in elementary schools, is that?
Correct. They'll be doing all of the addition construction, they'll be doing the bus loop at the elementary school, the new addition there. They won't be doing the parking lot area because that would push us over, but basically everything else that was in the original scope for that elementary project.
So was, I mean, pretty big item on the elementary school site work, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So was the need to stay within the guidelines of the AOT a driver for that?
It's a number of things, and that, and at the end of October, we'd already gone up about six hundred thousand of that eight hundred.
Yeah.
That's partly because of the electrical pieces. We had to add the transformer there, which we originally didn't think we were going to have to do, and relocate some of those utilities. It also has to do largely with the stormwater issues.
So thinking about, and talking about those utility issues, the, we got, you know, we got allowances for site work, electrical, sixty thousand dollars on each project. Do we, do we have any, do we have a good sense that those, that's a pretty real number, that we won't blow that out of the water?
We have a pretty good sense, yes, from Ekman's prior experience and working with Eversource and communications with them. Again, we have some contingency, but they felt pretty good about that number. Of the site work costs, I can't give you exact numbers, but I'm going to give you sort of percentages of how those are broken down at the elementary school. About a third is the drainage costs, about eighteen percent with utilities, eighteen percent with paving and curbs, eleven percent is erosion control and demolition, eight percent is excavation and backfill, eight percent is gravel, three percent is site cuts and fill, and two percent is loan finishes. So again, drainage sort of driving the piece there, and that, that goes back to your earlier question, Skip.
Is that something you can just send out to us just as an information sheet?
What was that, Porter?
I just wanted to get, instead of trying to scribble it all down, just if she could send out that sheet with the breakdown.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Is the two ninety-seven we talked about something to bring up here or wait?
Nope. Please wait, it's not in the GMP.
I'm sorry, of the eight, I guess we're all focusing on the same thing because of the number, but do you remember how many people bid on site work?
I don't. I don't have those notes in front of me, I don't remember. There are, it's on every area, with the possible exception of like toilet accessories, there were three to five bidders at least.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Toilet accessories, I think, had two.
Yeah, but, but there were three to five on every.
On everything.
That's, that answers my question.
Changes at the junior senior high since October thirty-first. You'll see we're up about thirty thousand dollars in site costs there, and two hundred and two thousand in general conditions and temporary working conditions. Again, some work there pushed to the second summer, largely due to allow for the crawl space treatment, as well as the additional site work that's required due to the GOPers and structural needs. Originally, the cafeteria was slated to get hit that first summer. We can't do that because of the time it's going to take to do the crawl space and asbestos abatement, so that had to get moved to the second summer in order to give us space to operate out of during the full year.
So that necessitates the boiler rental?
Boiler rental, we've known all along, because we're demoing the old boiler room this first summer.
I forget what that was, Meredith, is that, is that partially a rent to own, or is that just money that's gone?
Boiler on a trailer.
Okay.
So going back to the cafeteria, so if I understand you correctly, because of asbestos abatement within the crawl space, they can't tackle that one this summer, is that because they don't have enough time to do abatement and then reno?
That's right.
So will they do abatement this summer and then reno next summer?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Additional ten thousand three hundred dollars for asbestos abatement at the crawl space, the boiler rental connections. Again, it wasn't broken out specifically before, we knew that that was coming on board, but you see the specific breakout for that of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. On both projects, we've added builder's risk at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that was previously carried in the owner's costs as an allowance. Our insurance carrier won't provide it, so they essentially purchase the policy, we pay for it.
Those are the two, the hundred and the twenty-six thousand called elementary school builder's risk insurance, those two numbers?
Yes.
Kind of seems, seems a shame to be paying their overhead for something that we should be able to purchase.
I don't disagree with you, but that was the advice of our insurance carrier, our liability carrier.
Is that due to it not being available to anybody as a policy, or something specific about our project?
They don't make it available to anybody. Our insurance carrier doesn't make it available to anybody, and their advice was to go through the builder to obtain that insurance.
So Meredith, just to follow the numbers, would that, that hundred and whatever the amount was formerly, would that have been in our, would that have been in our soft costs or?
Correct, so it was in at a smaller number.
Yeah.
I think underestimated.
Was it, well, we only had thirty thousand dollars carried in our soft costs before.
Correct.
You know, we, we didn't, we didn't cover both of these things. Got a hundred and twenty-six thousand, now we had thirty thousand before. While we're on this column, and maybe, maybe, maybe I missed it, but I'm just, just keep wondering, what drives the general conditions, three hundred and fifty-two thousand bucks?
The additional summer at the elementary school, so it's an additional, we anticipated to finish in June there, so now we're not going to be finishing until the end of the following August. And at the junior senior high, again, because now we've had to delay some of the structural work, we're going to have additional startup costs, and the duration of the project is probably going to be a bit longer because the cafeteria piece is going to happen in the second summer rather than the first.
So we'll have redundancy in their overhead items, because those are just plain overhead items?
A little bit.
Well, pretty much general contractor overhead items. Seems like a lot of money to me, but just my opinion.
Just, Meredith, on the builder's risk, we firmly had it as thirty thousand, and it's at one twenty-six now. Where did we get that number of thirty thousand originally? Was that something that?
From our architect.
Okay. That seems way off, huh?
Who's that?
Not the only area that we found to be way off.
Who's that carrying?
The project is our liability carrier.
I got to ask, what are the other areas were way off then?
So can we wait till we actually get to FME and owner's costs and finish with the GMP questions?
We'll table that.
Just one overarching question on the first sheet. I looked through this and the DOT roadwork, if there's, and as you explained to me, the roadwork's in the budget, but we haven't heard finally from DOT whether that's perfectly acceptable, or they want to add more requirements to it. So in two places, we have a TBD and no dollar amounts. If you're looking, it's the second line up, or the next to the last line in the elementary school, and the next to the last line in the junior senior high roadwork associated with Dr. Wood. So are those the only two numbers we're sort of waiting, and hopefully they're small or not at all, and every other number's at least been touched, or are we still counting forward?
Well, we haven't opened any walls yet, we haven't dug any holes yet, we haven't pulled out any pipes yet, so it is one of those many items that would fall into contingency. Is it the biggest single known unknown? I guess yes. We've had a lot of back and forth with the DOT, including two onsite meetings in the last month, and some continued back and forth. Both our police and fire chief slash public works director have written letters of support for our current driveway plan. They don't seem to have any concerns about the elementary school project, their only concern is about a fourth curb cut at the junior senior high bus loop, which we're really saying is more of a bus lane that only gets used about an hour a day in total, that would be posted with signs that say bus and emergency vehicles only. So we're optimistic that the commissioner will sign off on that, but I can't guarantee it.
Okay, and so I understand we're waiting for that, and it's unknown until they come out with a decision, but it sort of looks like, I recognize we haven't opened any walls, but we've at least gone back a few times, and we have more detailed plans so that the numbers we're seeing here in the cost estimate is about as good as it's, they've all been touched with professionals giving us bids, et cetera, on them, so yeah, there could be a whole lot of still unknowns once we crack the first block out, but at least as far as having all the detail work and knowing that number's been touched, and it shouldn't explode unless something happens that we didn't know about, is a fair assumption.
Fair assumption.
Meredith, I had one other question on the DOT. As far as, is there the initial concepts, is that in the site prices for now?
Yes.
You know, we just, to be determined is any additional?
Any changes that they require, if they require any.
After their review is final.
After their review is final.
Yeah, I mean, my, my thoughts on that, that, that's, you know, can be a wide open can of worms, but if you think about it, at the elementary school, there, in my mind, the only thing they could be looking for that could be real expensive would be an acceleration or de-acceleration lane out of one oh eight. There isn't, there isn't any room for either one at the elementary school, and they might look for something. Meredith said that's already not the case, you're good with the elementary school.
So far, they have not shared any concerns about that elementary school.
And, and what I was going to say, the same, same idea on the, on the high school, we've already got the, the lane for the buses, and there's no room to go out into one oh eight to do anything anyway, so I think it's probably, probably should come back okay. It's just, I'm just talking aloud. I think what Meredith mentioned, though, is that we are asking for more, more curb cuts than we are allowed by.
True.
The state curb cut regulations.
Correct.
So I would be shocked if they don't ask for some sort of widening there.
Is there any room?
Yeah.
Do you think there's room?
I don't think it's a big deal, but I think, you know, it is what it is.
And Russ, back to your comment about surprises, I think we've been pretty diligent throughout this whole process, especially the meeting before last to say, to ask the question, are there any areas within this project that should be wows, I think it was the term we used, something significant, and the answer was no, so.
They didn't like waldos before?
Right, so I, but I think it's important to keep that pressure on that.
Well, the asbestos has been a significant hit.
We had already identified that when the question was asked.
No, not completely. Because we had always talked about the costs, and it was always a question about the schedule, and now we're finding out that it is a schedule impact, which.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's not the end of the word, it is what it is, but it was always something, again, unknown out there that, I mean, I think that's roughly, we're talking five hundred thousand dollars for that now, right? For the removal and the associated cost, the schedule impact.
Because of the timing.
Because of the timing. But, again, it was something that was identified, that was pursued, and we have an answer to that, so.
And before.
And it's within bite at this point.
Right.
Before we jump off the first page, sort of the last comment I have, and I don't know if people agree or disagree with me, going over all the details and what's changed and all that is critically important, but I sort of came out of this by saying the nine hundred thousand dollar building escalation cushion that we put in was enough to cover the nine hundred thousand in summary increases that we had for all the reasons we've discussed so far. So we still haven't broken the budget, we've just taken one of those contingencies that we've had, and now that we have bids in, I'm assuming those bids aren't subject to cost escalations, they're the bids, in which case, I, whether each individual issue is righteous or not, at least we've been able to cover that without bursting outside the thirty-three million or so.
I would say that's largely true, I would say that there are sometimes materials pieces that are part of the bid that could still be subject to some escalation in the new fiscal year, but I, I think those would be absorbed in contingency.
So on that front, just to drill down a little bit more on that, the October thirty-one, two thousand seventeen bid had, you know, the nine fifty thousand escalation cost, it's about roughly three percent of the total bond amount, and then the GMP absorbs that, or it seems to be incorporated in, maybe in part for some of these additional things that were, you know, the, you know, like the asbestos and stuff, but do we have sort of an idea that, that, in other words, you have a, you have an escalation of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in four months, essentially?
No, because they were bidding on pricing at that time, they were estimating on current pricing, and bidders are bidding on when they're planning to do the work.
Right, but they, what I'm saying is their estimates in October, you would think would be kind of close, even, you know.
But they weren't bidding, they weren't estimating a year and a half out, they were estimating right now, how much would it cost. Bidders, however, submitting on, if I'm doing this work in a year and a half.
Okay.
And that, again, that's part of why those escalation costs have been built in, bidders know that materials costs are going to go up.
Sure, I wonder why they wouldn't just give us those numbers in the first place?
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering.
The escalation costs have been built in since December of two thousand sixteen, and they've left it in that place until now when they've broken it out.
It's pretty standard, you bid in today's numbers, and you escalate for the midpoint of construction or whatever, I mean, that's, that's pretty standard.
Yeah, maybe, I just don't know the, the framework, it just seemed odd.
I think you can reasonably estimate that there could be a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of escalation in material costs still out there. We don't know what's going to happen necessarily with some of the steel pricing, I mean, most of our steel hopefully will be locked in, because most of that work happens this year, not the following year, but there are other things that could be in flux, depending on what happens with some of the tariff pieces that are, that are moving around, but instead of carrying that as a separate line, those monies are built into contingency so that if anything happens and those don't get spent, they come back to us as the owner.
I'm not saying, your point's well taken, but I would also say that you sort of have a choice, if you want to buy into the fact that they use current pricing quote unquote, but said, here's a nine hundred thousand dollar cost estillation contingency because we know we're not forecasting out what prices will be a year and a half from now, so we're putting it in one lump here, and we tend to use that lump to redistribute, I'll buy that. I still think, you know, your point is, it would have been nice if we all understood better in, in our minds that, you know, that was, the price that was estimated was a current pricing, and we have the nine hundred thousand contingency to cover back in October, where we're sort of asking that question now.
Meredith, when you, do we have enough, your, your steel example's perfect, because that's one that could in fact, couldn't in fact happen. Do we have enough detail to know the price per ton that they bid so that we can see an increase, so we're just going to take their word for it, they bid a thousand dollars a ton, and now it's twelve hundred dollars a ton?
I know, they're trying to lock that in last week, and so the sooner we make that decision, they tried to get in before that price went up.
That really wasn't my question.
I know.
My question is, are we aware of the detail enough so that when they say light fixtures went up twenty percent because copper prices went up, do we have enough detail to say, wait a minute?
Do we have it all today? No, because they haven't locked in a single bidder, but once they do, we will have access to that information.
I, I think that's important, because that's.
It's part of our pricing, it's part of reviewing, what they, their submissions.
I, I think, I think it would be inappropriate, and I'm sure everybody agrees, to just say, well, we estimated it was going to be X and now it's Y. That's not.
Right, that's not how people submit bids, so that's not how we would review the information.
So long as the detail's there.
There's a lot of ways to also go back and find that information. For example, liquid asphalt, I mean, it's, it's traded at a certain rate.
Right.
You go by every week and see what the rate's going for, and.
Right.
Bids are based on that, that's one escalation that could be set at the end of the project, so it could be one of the, potentially, you know, if something happens in the world trade with oil, I could go a little bonkers at times.
We typically go, I mean, I'm sure that Ekman has the base prices for all those items.
They do.
That's how they'd send it out, they say, assume that the price is this, and if it's above that, you get paid more when you do it, and if it's below that, we get a credit. That's typically how it works.
And I would expect when the bids come in, you know, to your point, there are a couple things, like the prices of raw materials, that should be documented as part of the bid. But all the man-hours and everything that goes into each piece of the puzzle's not going to be, so you can always make it cloudy, but having those prices established and having Ekman say, I've checked every one of those prices, and none of them are substandard, they were consistent with what the price is today and has been for the past, so we won't get lowball their high.
I would be shocked if Ekman doesn't have those numbers, that's how you do business.
Yeah, I would agree.
I'd be very surprised. But it, once everything's signed, we should make sure, you know, that we have all that information.
Right.
We already had that conversation with them.
I guess this is a.
I'm sure, I'm sure you did.
This is, this is not always, always exacting stuff, but I mean, boy, the numbers just matched up so.
A little funny.
So can I continue through?
Two, three, so I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, Ekman is, Ekman, to their credit, I suppose, is going back and forth with these folks all along to kind of see where things are at, I would think, so they, so they know where the, where the prices are, they, they know what's, the, the market is. I, I'm not saying, I just, just, just odd that it came out like boom.
What you're saying is, you're glad we didn't put a million and a half dollars in escalation?
Something like that.
Well, I mean, there is a point here, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars off budget from pre-bond estimate to today. I mean, that's, when you're dealing with a.
But they absorb builder's risk.
Right.
Right? We just removed that from our cost, it's not like we took for those monies, there's a hundred and twenty-six thousand that they weren't carrying before. I mean, there are pieces like that where there's been give and take as well. I get it.
There've been some baby waldos, there haven't been a large.
If anybody thinks we're going to get a price a million dollars lower than the GMP.
That's not, and that was in my first comment, right? That's usually the cost.
And they'd be foolish to give us a number less than that.
So Meredith, can I back us up just for a second, and I know you want to go forward, and I'm sorry for doing this, but I, just in terms of GMP, what, I mean, that, I, I know what the language means, but I don't know what that legally means, and so if there is an escalation beyond this, I mean, they're, this is guaranteed maximum price, right? But what's the guarantee? I mean, is this that they will absorb those costs, or like, you know?
That's the guarantee.
That's the guarantee.
Unless they get some form of change order.
Yeah.
They can't spend more than the GMP without the express written approval of us via change order, and they eat the difference.
So this, so if I can just give an example, and I think this is right, if we have a change order for, say, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, doesn't the GMP go up accordingly?
Yes.
Yeah, by that amount?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, but if it's, if it's, you know, worst case scenario, they, and this, this gets, this can get a little fuzzy too, but if they underestimate it, for instance, by the contingency, and it goes over, that's where they, that's where they.
Fade the cost.
There are, there are certain escalations, though, that we are responsible for. You won't, you won't get somebody to give you a price today to put steel up in four years or three years, it just won't happen, because what's happened in the past with Chinis and Chinese steel and everything, so some of those, I would fully expect that we will be on the hook for if there's a huge escalation, and that's how the contract will be written.
Where it can get ambiguous or muddy is, is where you have something that somebody didn't know or really couldn't have known about, you know?
Right, on the other. Right. On the other hand, we have some additional contingencies that are built in that we haven't blown out yet, so maybe there's hope, and the other thing on the GMP, and this may sound stupid, but I'd just like to have it out there, is, they can't say, okay, we're not going to go over the price, but gee, we're not going to do that work, because that's coming out of our pocket. They can't back out of what they've signed up to do, just because it's gotten more expensive, and say, oh gee, we're not going to put the last quarter in the building.
And, Meredith, you might have mentioned this already, but I, I mean, if they, if they come in below theoretically the GMP, the savings come back to us.
Correct.
And then it would be the responsibility of the school board to make a judgment on what to do with that money?
Yes.
It's not necessarily refunded automatically to the taxpayers.
It's a bond set aside for the school, it has to be, it would have to be used on a school project, or a school project.
Right.
Sounds like a split for one window.
It has to be used for the scope of what we identified it being used for, and otherwise, it would be returned to taxpayers, and if you wanted to use those funds in a different way, you would have to have that approved by voters via a warrant article.
Right. So, right now, we've got 1.3 million in contingency walking forward.
Well, that and this page-
In CM.
This page doesn't deal with some of the outside issues of grants and rebates and funds and all that, which we'll get into later on, so this page by itself sort of is a standard, is standard, maybe?
Correct.
A few issues to talk about.
Yep. We talked about escalation, not included, the funds from the DOT interest leading, not included, the Kinnear and New England ductwork connections, and that's made $297,000. Again, we discovered those kind of along the way, due to the due diligence by our engineer, but they weren't within the original scope of our work, and the add-alternates, so we'll get to those. Owner costs, overall, FFE and soft costs are within budget, they are down from our last projection, probably about $66,000, which I will explain in a moment. There's additional $54,000 for cafeteria lighting and sound. That's one of those examples of where our architect underestimated costs-
Cafeteriums.
Lighting and sound.
Okay.
To, to make our costs work within the budget, we reduced our furniture allowance by $100,000, so you'll see that in those lines. We have additional landscaping costs, because we agreed to fencing at the elementary school.
I'm sorry, what did she say? What did we decrease?
Furniture.
First one.
First one went down 100, and the next two went up about 100.
60,000. Additional landscaping costs combined at $47,450, that includes fencing, again, at the elementary school, plantings at both the bus loop neighborhood pieces, as well as the carpenter parking lot, things we agreed to provide to our neighbors.
Meredith, can I ask you a question on these, these items that we have, like, that landscaping, we don't have a quote on that yet, right? That's still, that's our estimate?
It's gone, we put out our MPs, but we don't yet have final price, we haven't had bid agreement yet.
That's pretty much true on all the pieces on this page?
Yes and no. The engineering costs, we've already paid a significant amount of those, because we had to pay for additional site and stormwater, engineering, as well as additional engineering for the geo-piers, so some spent, some of this has been spent, some has not. Additional costs of $41,000 for the extent of the hazmat survey and treatment plan, so that includes testing out our roofs, the crawl space, et cetera. Some additional permitting costs, again, underestimated by our architect, and I don't mean that as a criticism, but we, we didn't have in-house that expertise to make those adjustments last year when we-
Which one was this, Meredith? I'm sorry, I'm trying to do-
Permitting.
Okay.
But we saved some money on bonding, and we removed our cost for builder's risk, because we transferred that to the construction manager. Our full contingency amount is still within our budget, so you can't see this sheet, but we know already that back in December of 2016, the GMP was approved by voters at 30, well, that portion, the construction costs were approved at $33,351,430, we saved $259 thus far on that area. Our owners' costs and contingency were, when approved by voters, at $5,591,653. Don't panic when I say this next part, I'm sorry that you can't see it visually. Right now, we are at $5,833,608, but we have $308,870 in infrastructure grant funds that offset that. So, in total, we are at $38,876,692, which puts up $66,391 below our bond number of $38,943,083.
That grant that you talked about, the 308, which grant was that?
That's the infrastructure grant for school safety and security.
And that's the homeland security one, or some of the type?
Yes. It's state surplus funds that were run through the Department of Ed and support for homeland security for school safety and security.
So, in terms of, if we go back to security, it looks like that price went from 60 to 180-plus change, so there was almost a 60% increase. Can you, can we talk about that just for a second?
Are you asking for detail on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a pretty, I mean, that's greater than 50%, you know, that's a third, you know, two-thirds increase. Was that to comply with the grant, or was that because the project became more ambitious, or?
Because we had things that we hadn't originally necessarily signed up to do, so we were able to put in some additional cameras. We have a security system that will tie in with the town system, viewed by the police department. It has additional door security that wasn't originally included, so we can alarm all of our exterior doors. So, it's those kinds of costs.
And this, this is both facilities, because there's now a designation, okay, so that's for both buildings?
So, am I correct in guessing that we are maximizing the value of that grant by making sure that we are more secure, have more security upgrades?
And there were, there were some other pieces that are, that's 308,000, the grant total is somewhere around 460, so there were some other pieces that we originally had on our add-alternate list that are not now on that list, which include, like, the door film, door and window film, the security film. We, that $308,000 includes some money for replacing door hardware, for redoing the vestibules, so, so we get 80% of those costs from the state, and we've sort of folded it all in here while we're doing that work. It makes sense to have Ekman doing that, rather than doing some of it twice, or a security contractor is not Ekman.
So, Meredith, when we talk about add-alternatives, what's the number we've got for those right now? Which could get eaten up pretty easily, but, but we've got the contingency?
Correct. So, our contingency is remaining intact, and we're under by $66,391 at the moment.
So, that means we can't really pick a lot of things right now?
That is true.
Yeah.
But, we're going to have other windows, well, windows, time period.
Well, we, we lost our cost increase contingency on page one. We haven't lost any of the other contingencies quite yet, and-
You just have to wait and see.
One of the grants we got covered some poor forecasting and original cost, was that-
Well, I think that was more scope change than poor forecasting.
It was a little, a little of both, so it was, the security piece, again, some of that was additional, like, the camera system is more robust than we maybe had originally planned, but door hardware, for example, and the secure vestibules, we were originally planning to do anyway, but now we get some of those costs back from the state.
Okay, and the 308 grant, we have a column called the O E grant one-
Yeah.
And then we have another column-
You have to add those three together.
So, on page one, that 76 plus 59 plus-
Plus 15, plus 90 on the next page.
Okay. Those four, okay.
Plus the 56, and the 56 is essentially the vestibules, the door hardware, pieces that were originally in Ekman's, and the other pieces that are things that were within our scope.
So, the five grants mentioned over the two pages equal about the 308,000 from the safety-
Yes.
Spread out by us or by them? Did we push the 308 into the places we wanted it?
We did.
Okay. But that 308's covered to offset costs already, so that was one of the questions I had, is how much of outside pockets of things have been included or not included in so far? The 297, the air duct to nowhere, is not in this number, so that's an answer.
That's right, so I'm coming to that.
One more question. Which number is, do we use to figure out the fees of both Ekman and Vanwell, which, is it the GMP? At their, at their various rates?
So, Vanwell's was figured on your total project cost, into the contract that was signed before I got here, so it was what you were seeking in the bond, was the total project cost, and it's 7.5% of that, so that number hasn't changed since the vote was approved last March.
Well, we have, we have things that, we have about $4 million worth of stuff that is roughly, that's ours, right, as owners, so they're not getting a fee off of that?
No.
Okay, so that, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Excess fee is based on the construction and site work cost, the pieces that they manage.
Right, I'm just wondering if, we've got it calculated here, I probably could reverse engineer it, but what, based on their percentage, but just didn't know which number we key it off of here.
Construction cost?
Isn't that fee in the GMP?
Yeah.
The fee is in the GMP.
Yes.
Yeah, but how is that recalculated?
Yeah, what number do we use?
But it's based on the construction estimate, not the extra owner's risk and contingency.
It talks about how their fee is calculated.
And the architect's-
2.5% of X plus Y.
I guess what I'm really getting at now is it's baked, it's pretty much set. I mean, yeah, so.
Again, they get a percentage of change orders-
Yep.
-for their contract. If it's above dollar threshold, they get 2.5%, which is the same to, they get across the board. If it's below that $5,000 threshold, they get a larger amount, it's just essentially a usage fee, I would say, but it's pretty standard. So, if you're going to make a change, go big, I guess, is the best, in a sense.
Yeah, below 5, 5,000, right, yeah.
But, but again, of that 66,000, and that's what I'm coming to, if there are things we know we want to add now, now's the time to do it, so that we don't pay any additional charges for adding those in later.
And that was my question, because in terms of priority, I mean, if it had been 500,000, you'd look at that add-alternate list differently. It's 66, so what do we do as a next step?
I'll tell you.
Oh, good.
I came prepared for you all.
All right.
I'm not ready.
We're gonna, we'll get you.
So, other considerations are the necessary $297,000 for the ductwork correction at the elementary school. That's already led into the conversation about other potential funds. One potential funding source are our impact fees, which the school board can request. Right now, there's about $179,000 available in impact fees, so again, of that 297, that's a pretty substantial amount of that.
Is this on the last page? We're talking about priorities now, and the 297 is one of those?
The 297 is not on that list, because it was not an add-alternate, it was a pre-existing condition, essentially, that we identified in, as we did the due diligence for this project.
Right, but if we're, if we're saying, these are the things that we maybe or may not be able to fit in, adding the 297, that is, as an issue that we need to consider adding into the project, should be listed there.
And will, and will Ekman get a percent of that?
They will.
And engineering fees?
I think-
If necessary.
Yeah, depending on what additional work is needed.
So, we're going to be-
That includes that 2, that's part of that 297.
Right, 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 right. So, we're already going to be over budget in terms of the total project cost, but we have increased revenues through, well-
So, let me continue to walk through those. So, one funding source, which the school board has discretion, or the discretion to request, are impact fees. So, impact fees could be added to the project, or to be used to offset the project, because one of the uses of impact fees is to add on to the school. You are building additions to both of your schools, in theory, and based on the legal opinion that you got, again, before I got here, you can apply those fees to this project. We also anticipate-
That's 185?
179 right now.
Okay.
By, yes, it continues to, to increase a little bit. We have, we anticipate bond interest of approximately $500,000. Now, using bond interest would be subject to voter approval via a warrant. You could do warrants in more than one setting, you could do one next March, and you could do one the following March, so that you could identify, ooh, next March, if we vote to have that interest spent, we could tackle X project that fits into the timing next summer, and you could have those other funds available and go back to voters to request that, maybe for some additional FFE costs, right, maybe for furniture at the end of the day.
And the 500,000 is a current number that we're pretty sure about, or that we-
It's a projected number, based on interest rates and what we anticipate the, the schedule of payments to be.
Over the life of the project, so in theory, if things run according to oil from this point on, we're not going to get an increase in that 500,000 much?
Yeah, maybe a little.
Right, but I mean-
Interest rates could go up for us significantly, they could triple, but-
Yeah, but that's not going to change the budget.
3%, and we can't go much above that, because then we violate arbitrage rules, and I don't really want to get into that, because it will make you all crazy. But, half a million.
I'm sure there's some investment bankers who wouldn't mind doing that.
We also have, right now, the district's, on the district's coffers, sort of this fund balance, about $230,000 that the board held back at the end of last fiscal year, which were those life safety reimbursement funds that came from the state. Again, those could be carried forward into the project or into the operating budget at the discretion of the school board, so-
What was that number?
About $230,000. 2.5% of the prior year's gross appropriation.
Is that a warrant, or a board approval?
A warrant, because you're using unspent funds.
Well, this was the reimbursement we got from the state on the 3 million or so of this-
Correct. The board had the discretion to hold it back, but it would require, allocating it into the project requires voter approval. Doesn't have to be a separate warrant, it could be part of your operating budget, but-
And at the moment, is that residing in any one of our trust funds, or, okay, so-
It's just unreserved fund balance, it just shows on the coffers that way.
So, a decision has to be reached, either to permanently park it somewhere this year, or to roll it into the budget calculation mixture?
That is a decision, yes. It can, it can sit for longer than one year. The board could hold it for longer than that.
As an individual dollar amount, or as part of the general fund number that's calculated?
Part of the general fund, it's part of the district reserve.
Yeah, and what I mean by that is if the board voted between now and the next budget cycle to take that 230 and park it in a maintenance trust fund to be used later for one of these projects on the list.
It can't allocate it to a trust fund without voter approval. The board doesn't have the discretion to do that.
Okay, but if it did, it would take it out, and you could still calculate the general reserve out of any surplus.
In that hypothetical situation, yes.
So, could that seven, I'm doing this in my head, 800,000, whatever, can that be used for add-alternatives?
So, the 500,000 requires voter approval.
Right.
So, right now, we don't have it.
Right, but, but the 179 on-
The 179-
On impact fees, can that be used?
The board can request those funds to be applied to the project, which would free up, again, money within your project budget to offset- up, again, money within your project budget to offset the cost of that two ninety-seven.
And the, and the two thirty as well by warrant?
Yes, it's not quite, it's a different process.
But we can't just, we can't just approve it. It's gotta be approved by the voters, is that right?
Correct, yes.
So there's potentially eight hundred thousand dollars that could be grabbed for ad-alternates?
If the two thirty becomes part of the underspending, the way the school board generates the general fund is it's a percentage calculation, right, on like two and a half or whatever?
Two and a half percent of prior year gross appropriations.
Gross appropriations. So if, the thing I was asking Meredith, if you wanted to isolate that two thirty and say, let's put it somewhere so it's not part of that calculation of two and a half percent, because the board may be able to vote to park it.
Yes.
And then still take two and a half percent of last year's budget to make a general fund, so you'd...
The board couldn't have a warrant article, to your point, Russ, that said, would the voters approve two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, no additional taxpayer impact, to be moved to the building repair maintenance trust? And then the board could hold a public hearing and move those funds.
And then that's parked over there, then you still have two and a half percent of the general fund, which the school board then can say, I see a reason to spend. That's all I was trying to...
The other alternative is to take it out of the contingency.
So, that brings me back, before we go too far down this road, thank you, Eric, we still have one point...
There are no weeds in the snow.
One point three million dollars in contingency, and we know that the board has the authority, if they choose to, to use the impact fees of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. I feel pretty comfortable that we would have a hundred thousand dollars left in contingency at this stage of the game, but I can't guarantee that. But we also know that we've got some other doors that we could potentially open later if we needed to.
Well, it also depends upon the gravity of the issue, when this non-connection to duck to nowhere, whoever said that, is something you gotta fix.
Yeah, that's a, that's a major, major issue.
It is a contingency.
It's a good, my take on it is, at this stage of the game, it should come out of the contingency. And part of my thought process on that is, first of all, that's what the contingency is for, and secondly, every single person in this room has said to the taxpayers of this town that it's gonna be, whatever the number is, and to start moving money around to increase that number, I think, is being a little bit disingenuous.
Well, I would think, the only question I would end up having would be, if it's a duck to nowhere, and I was the one who put that, but I mean, that's just my simplistic, it wasn't finished properly, do we have the ability to go back, whoever had that project to complete?
Not at this point. Because the ten-year statute of repose, probably beyond that.
Okay. So I was finding it out after the barn door was completed, of course, this could catch up.
I think, Eric, though, your point's a good one, I think the, it also kind of sucks, sucks it up a little bit, you know, you're grabbing it from where it should...
At least upfront, I mean, there's gonna be some costs associated with the DOT stop, and, you know, if, if in a year, we're three quarters of the way through the project, and we need to have these discussions, I think that's the appropriate time to have them. I need to just, at this point, add more money to the project, when we've been telling the town for next number of years, this is what it's gonna cost, I don't think it's the right approach.
And in effect, I mean, the, the impact fees will be there, they're not going anywhere.
Right, and this is what the contingency was set up for. I mean, it sucks that we gotta use it right upfront, but...
I will say, though, that the impact fees are for expansion of the school.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And they will be gone in 2021, and I don't think we're doing any other additions in the near future, so we'd better use it before this project is over. But I agree with you, it's not a one for one.
Right. What happens if we go back?
They go back to taxpayers.
I think, too, I think the decision you're recommending, and we all would buy it, is the two ninety-seventh's part of the project, right? We gotta take care of this, whether we get funded from where, for what reason, and the... But wasn't there another grant or two we were applying for and hopeful, but we had no idea whether we were qualified for, or...
Still hoping the state's gonna reimburse us at some point.
Building aid, you mean?
No, no, I thought there was, I thought we talked that there was some other grants that...
They let us do our ballots today.
There, there may, down the line, be a home insecurity grant for emergency management that might help us with the cost of generator. A generator at the junior, senior high is designated by our town emergency management official as a warming shelter. Right now, and over the next two years, it's really not gonna be usable for that purpose, so we probably won't be able to apply for that until we complete our renovation.
I was just trying to throw up.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's the only one that I'm aware of at this point.
We interrupted you, do you have any, after the two thirty anymore?
I have ad-alternates, to give you some pricing on those, but I would agree with Eric, we talked about it as a contingency item several months ago, that it's the kind of thing that we, we found it, it was a problem we didn't know existed, we have to address it, the most appropriate way to deal with it right now is contingency. And we know that down the line, if we are running out of contingency items, because we run into some other large unexpected things, that we have some other place that we can go. Ad-alternates, we saw that there are about five that emerged as priorities on the list, and these are, I could read them to an order of cost. The elementary eastern sidewalk is seven thousand seventy-five dollars. That is the paving, the bulk of the paving of the elementary school will happen this summer, so that's one we may want to look at in a couple of months and decide whether or not it makes sense to include that at that time.
Which one is this now?
Elementary by two minutes sidewalk.
The four point eight one or something?
That was the rating, and the cost is seven thousand seventy-five dollars.
It'll change.
Cow wall at the elementary gym, that again is a decision we will need to make relatively quickly, because that, there's some engineering related to that, and that structural work would need to happen this summer, that is thirty-five thousand dollars. Skylights and shades in the cafeteria at the junior, senior high is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That won't occur until next summer, so that's not a decision we need to make at this time.
Where, where are you on that one, Meredith?
Middle of the high school, four point eight, looking at the shaded on the right.
I got you.
How much was it?
How much was that?
One forty.
And I know we're all writing this down, but this is another thing we can get this sheet later on, just to...
I'm just giving my whole powerpoint. The, that decision we would need to make about this time next year, so that they could, again, incorporate whatever alterations to the design would need to take place. High school generator transfer switch, eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. The timing of that really doesn't matter at this point. An elementary generator transfer switch is sixty-one thousand four hundred, again, the timing of that is not critical. And insulation of the exterior walls of the junior, senior high, which I just want to note is about a thirty-year payback period. And I know we had that discussion about windows, so I'm just raising that, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I don't see the transfer switch of the...
For elementary is not on there specifically, I just, we got pricing for both.
Okay, so, how much is that?
Sixty-one four.
And eighty-three was the...
Eighty-three five for the high school, sixty-one four for the elementary.
And so that would just be an ad-alternate, so...
What was the insulation?
Three hundred and twenty thousand.
You said that was a thirty-year payback?
But what does it mean in terms of the architect direction, in terms of comfort and draft and all that stuff?
That's the heat, the money you're gonna spend on the heat to offset it is, over thirty years, the cost you, what it takes to insulate those walls.
No, I meant, what I meant was, on a day-to-day basis, if you don't do that, are you, are you suffering drafts and breezes where you probably shouldn't be, and it's cold there?
I think it depends, some of that is some ceiling that's taking place, there's some moisture penetration and some repairs that are gonna occur during this project anyway. Some of the windows, the most faulty windows are being replaced, you saw that list from Greg, there are a few identified at the junior, senior high that will be replaced. And in general, this is the cost to do the rest of that piece, so...
I just, I just wondered, because, I mean, there are two issues, there's the payback, there's the financial, and then this...
I agree.
Yeah.
And again, these are all great topics, right now, we don't have the money, we don't have to make the decision, so we have time to weigh all of this as we continue to move forward. And your priorities could change, you know, over, over the course of, course of the project. Again, the two that are most critical in terms of timing are the elementary cow wall, which is the lighting. Well, it, it lets some light into the space on the upper walls of the elementary gym, and the eastern sidewalk at the elementary school for seven thousand.
So it's forty-two thousand dollars worth of stuff we should be making, if this is not when?
As soon as possible. In an ideal world, we'd make it in the next couple of weeks.
It's pretty, pretty small.
Or tonight.
Or tonight.
So the insulation, we don't even, that's not even an issue until next summer, we're not even into that...
Correct.
...aspect of the building?
Yeah.
Well, to break sort of two pieces around, and I hear the forty-two thousand so far is one that says, we should decide this now, whether now is a week or two from now or tonight. And so far, the others are ones that we can say, let's get into the project, and we have time to determine.
So the sidewalk, I mean, you could decide the sidewalk a month from now, I mean, that paving won't occur until this summer, and it's a small enough project that it would be easy to do, it's not gonna add substantial additional time. The cow wall is gonna add some additional engineering time, which they would want to know in the next couple of weeks, in order to be ready to do that for summer, and get the material ordered.
Right, if I had to step back from the macro, though, and just looking at, okay, there's some projects that we need to make some decisions on now, so far, we have some funds out there, the impact fees, the five hundred thousand interest, and maybe a little other stuff that we can protect from a, I'd love to be in a position where we're making sure we don't, we can get that five hundred thousand or the one eighty-five and do everything to say, we're not using it, we're just making sure we get our hands available to use on the project, because we've got a lot of learning to do once this thing starts, and this may be additional contingency. And let's hold off on some of those things until we get a little further in the project. I just want to sort of protect that by saying, let's do these actions now, or the school board should do some of these actions to say, let's get the extra cash cushions, not that we're gonna use them, and including the interest, and the issue being to the taxpayer is, look, we're hoping to bring this in at thirty-nine million, there's a little fluff here and there, anything that's saved, you're gonna get back. What we don't want to do is have a surprise that says we have to go back for another, you know, five hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand, because we didn't take the actions today to protect that extra money. So that would sort of be my counsel, is to get that wrapped, not to use it, but just to make sure it's available.
So looking at the funds, the flexibility of the funds, rather than necessarily the prioritizing, are, in addition to the prioritizing of this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I go along with Meredith, saying, whatever you need for us to decide today, we need to decide, whether it's yes or no, but anything we can put off on adding projects that are not gonna put us at risk cost-wise, and anything we can do to secure funds to give us a little extra cushion in the future, are things that a good board and planning person should put aside, in the hopes that we don't have to come to the taxpayers with surprise. Or the only surprise would be, hey, we got some money left over, we'll give it back to you in taxes. That would be my thought.
So the committee has a decision to make, one on the GMP itself, two on whether or not it wants to take on the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, and to Russ's point, either thirty-five for the cow wall, or we can come back and have that discussion at another time, and/or the seven thousand dollars for the sidewalk. I mean, to me, right now, those are the only things that can be on the table. Again, we have sixty-six thousand, we're sixty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars for the grid, in our combined GMP and owner's costs, below our bonded amount of thirty-eight nine forty-three oh eighty-three.
My point of view on the, on the two ninety-seven, it's, I think that's a gotta do, I mean, we can't, we can't have full equality in the elementary school, so...
Oh, yeah, it's a question of how we're gonna fund it, in my opinion, is to take it out of the contingency.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
We have to do it, it's not an option. I'm okay with spending the thirty-five and the seven.
So am I.
But at the elementary school, take it out of the sixty-six that we have, so lock that down to, you know, twenty-five or whatever.
Or the contingency, I mean, I would think the building blocks are, as we go through this process, we use the contingencies that are remaining first in the project, and then, should we exceed those for some reason, then the extra five hundred thousand in interest, or the extra hundred and eighty-five thousand in impact fees could be additional contingency we're planning, you know, we're appropriating, not using, but having there to be able to give us that little extra wiggle room. But we should methodically use the contingencies in the project as we go along, before we use that outside money necessarily.
Well, this is a budget underrun, at this point, projected budget underrun, so why don't we just use that? Same as using contingency, it's the same pot of money, you know?
Except that, I, yeah, just to delineate, the ductwork really is a contingency item.
Oh, I agree with that.
And the others were ad-alternates that, that weren't included in the original design, but add nice features to our project that would be beneficial to students and learning at this basis.
And given the imbalance between the two funds, the sixty-four versus eight hundred, I mean, it's gonna, we're gonna go down the path that we necessarily have to go down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're not gonna spend our two point six million dollars in contingency, but we haven't even broken ground, and I don't, I don't want to jinx us by having us spend that down. I think it's important, it's a, it's a big project, to preserve as much of that as we can, and again, knowing that there are some other potential funding options available to us to look at later, if that's something this committee recommends, gives me a little comfort that using that two ninety-seven right now is not gonna leave us in a terrible position.
Well, and we need to, as Mel Brooks said, save our phony baloney jobs for another year, so we can make decisions for the future, as we...
Well, we weren't, I think the message I got all along from Ekman and Vanwell's, we weren't particularly fat with our contingencies, you know, we're not...
Five percent contingency is what they absorb in the contingency.
Yeah.
Right.
But the two ninety-sevens, to me, is pretty straightforward, it's a contingency item, that's what that contingency is for.
You know, all things being equal, we've made it to the bidding stage, where we haven't opened it up yet, but we've made it this far with only using the building escalation contingency, so, you know, this could have been snake pits so far, we're not, you know, we're not in the snake pits, we're covering it, and we still have a little room in the future, and I think that's a pretty good place.
We'll never get there. So Mike, how do you want to handle it from the facilities, do we...
Well, I think, I think we can, maybe just, you know, we could, everybody's got their questions answered, we'll just do a motion, you know, that we make a recommendation as a building committee on those items, Meredith listing them again, is the GMP, the cow wall, the sidewalk, and...
And the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for the pre-existing ductwork issue.
Will come by virtue of contingency. I so move.
Second.
Does the building committee approve?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything? One of the concerns I have about, the, the impact fees may be a totally separate issue to, to request those. The five hundred thousand in interest, if technically that rolls into being a savings that has to be accounted for in the budget rollover year, where it's really part of the bond, okay, I'd like to protect that five hundred thousand and not to go into the flip of the operating budget years, okay, and to be held in the bond as that other additional contingency.
Can you spit that back?
It stays in the bond for the life of the bond.
Yeah.
So we don't lose it?
Until the project is complete, it would stay in with those bonds, it wouldn't be until we close out the project that you would have to make an ultimate decision about where those funds go, and lacking a warrant article, they would go back to voters.
Right, I wouldn't want it disgorged as part of the... Right, I wouldn't want it disgorged as part of an operating surplus this year, I'd want it to stay within the bond, because that's what created it.
Yeah, it has to.
Yeah, that's what Meredith said.
So along that line, something that Will's son said she mentions is the impact fees in 2021.
Those are the only two wiggles that I was mentioning before, I think we should protect until we're finished with the project and know exactly what we're facing.
And the impact fees are the ones that we have the discretion, if I remember correctly, to determine how to allocate, so that is an easier process to go through.
And the other one would.
So discretion over the allocation, you have to request that, or you have to take a vote and request those funds.
Meredith made reference, the last time this school used impact fees, I think, was to buy the copper property. I think that's what.
A portion of that, yeah.
Yes, a portion of it.
A loan from the town and, yeah.
Oh, no, no, absolutely, but that's the last thing, but there's a, not a huge, there's an issue with impact fees in town.
Right.
The validity of them in the first place, and how long they've been and everything, so that'll be, that could be quite a discussion, that's not going to be a simple.
Right, but the intent is there, assuming it's legal and rational and available, which may or may not be legally.
But I don't think you can request them and say, we want to take them and put them in a town, we might use them.
No, 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 no.
That's got a different rule, the 230 is the only other, the 230 that we got, the rebate back from fire and life safety, which I understood a portion of it was already rolled into.
Of course, no, it already went back to offset taxes this year, that's why people didn't see the huge spike in the interest and bond payment.
So that was like 115, about half of it or something like that?
It was about another 260 that went back.
And we still have 230 left?
Correct.
I want to, since we got a two-year project, and another 230 may slip away in a year before we're ready to find out where we are, because we're only one year into the project, whatever you guys got to do to put that money, park it someplace, not that we're spending it, but just park it so it doesn't disappear, would give you another quarter of a million dollars.
Eric, I think your point is well taken too, though, you know, we are not just going to park stuff places, it's a matter of determining factually what needs to happen in a logical fashion as we get into the project, more to determine where monies are coming from, how to do it appropriately to get the project done.
Right, I mean, you obviously need to think ahead, be prepared, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a good idea to start saying, we're putting this money aside in case we need it, put that money aside, that's not.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't want to have it, say, oh gee, it would have been nice if we remembered back then to do this, because now we can't anymore, that's the thing.
I agree, and I agree with that, that's the other side of that.
Meredith, with a quick, fun note, have any decisions been made about groundbreaking? I know it's a little pros.
Ekman was hopeful to be breaking ground April vacation week, but we'll see, so we have not yet set a date, I think we need to see how the melting process goes. I mean, I, you know, I had to cringe yesterday when I was told that to watch out for a storm next Tuesday into Wednesday, I'm about done with snow days and delays, I'm sure all of you are done with shoveling and snow blowing, we're hoping mid-April, Alina, and we'll shore that up as soon as we know the ground is going to thaw. So, but we have ordered, we've ordered some hard hats for you, and we'll have some, we'll make it an event. There was a question, and again, we don't need to address this tonight, but I think someone raised the point of, does it make sense to do the ceremonial groundbreaking in April, or does it make sense to, would it make more sense to wait until June when school's out and we start really working on the school sites themselves? I don't have a preference, that's something for this committee to decide.
I'll just put in a request that it's not snowing.
Me too.
So, Mike from the facilities committee, Meredith, I've got some questions on the AIA contract, some comments, but that's, we don't need to talk about that tonight, I will just send you an email.
Great.
With a few questions I have. One, just one thing, is I don't see a schedule reference in here, and I assume as part of this package, we've got to hold up to a schedule.
Yes, that's in the amendment that we would sign as part of the GMP. Right now, total overall, we're anticipating would be probably early June of 2020, whatever that is, right? This is 2018.
Yeah.
Originally, we're anticipating March, so we think it's more likely going to be June, based on the delays that we talked about already.
So we've got a school board to do what we need to do?
Yeah, I think the school board's going to be now, but I want to thank the building committee for coming in on such a, on such short notice, and I think we're, until further notice, our heavy lifting is done.
I will send you all the PowerPoint and I.
Hey, Al, is this going to be a short meeting, because you're my right who? Oh, jeez, that's right.
It'll be, it'll be fast.
Yes, but we're just, they're only items. We're in the GMP.
You want to write?
Al's got to go in that direction, as long as it's not a two-hour school board.
It's going to be a budget committee.
Mike, do you want to cancel, adjourn the building committee meeting?
So adjourned.
Yeah, and, you know, us old people need to use four sets of eyes to get around at night.
School board, we'll go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance again very quickly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one item on our agenda tonight, we just had a joint meeting of the school board and the building committee to review the guaranteed maximum price for the building projects at the junior senior high and the elementary school, and the budget committee approved the guaranteed maximum price in that meeting, and it is now our turn to accept that guaranteed maximum price. And in terms of that, I seek a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price that was outlined, the. Thank you very much.
So move.
Second.
And a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. McKinney, is there any discussion? We had a robust discussion in the joint meeting that just preceded this one, is there anything else that anyone has to add at this time?
Nope.
Hearing no discussion, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving the guaranteed maximum price, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, I seek a motion to adjourn at 8:22.
So move.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.